Recording in progress.
We're gonna play a trick. Move my name from, from to here. And there's was another name under me. It's obviously not the same person. We thought we better not.
Could be fun for me like Halloween if I had costumes.
Oh, yeah. You know who it was?
My Justin Bieber pop socket. I'm not ashamed. I'm a believer.
Justin has fans of all ages, ethnicities, countries.
I, I would too. But my daughter got this for me as a stocking stuffer and my, so I love it. I would never have purchased it for myself, but I do love it because she got it for me.
You can tell us if you would.
Well, I mean, if I would have seen it at the store, I would have bought it, but I never saw it. I've loved Justin. Yeah. I feel like his mom, me, we're both teenage moms. I feel like I could be a good life coach to him. He just, he doesn't know me yet. But yeah, I feel like he could use it.
He probably could use it.
Yeah. I could help him with financial literacy.
There you go.
You know, he just had to sell a bunch of stuff to make some money because he didn't know how to manage his money.
None of them girls.
And I feel like he doesn't have anyone he can trust that would really care about him. I would really care about him.
He better, he better get on his family's.
He just doesn't know I exist.
Put it out there.
Like, I know a lot of people use you. I swear I wouldn't. I just want to see the best for you and Haley, okay?
So I was in Chicago O'Hare for a lady. And I was like, hi, we'd make the connection because it was bad weather. It was straight winter. And I accidentally was like trying to get around the crowd because there were a bunch of people sitting on the walls because their flights were canceled. And I accidentally bumped into the person and it was.
No way.
Yes, yes. And that's the thing is like, I was like, is that him? And then the, there was a woman, you know, early twenties sitting and she saw his face because he had had his hoodie up and was kind of like, not trying to really look at people. But when he looked at me, she saw his face and she said, Yoda. She jumps up, she goes, damn after him. And like, I wanted to say hi, but I had to meet my flight.
You're like, I would have met you.
Hey, you could have held the flight up. I did. I thought I left my computer inside the waiting room. And I told him, could you have them go check? They stopped the flight just to go check and I didn't. Ron had put it up on top and I didn't realize it.
The only celebrity sighting I've ever had was recently, we were at the Seattle Art Museum and Usher was there right before his concert. And me and my best friend and my daughter were going to the concert the next night. And my cousin was here visiting and we went to Pike Place Market, but we parked in the garage at Sam. And we're sitting at the, the elevator and I look over and I'm like, oh, Usher. He's so much shorter than I thought. And, uh, and so I was. Yeah, he was like four feet away and his like six security guards. And I was like, I just want you to know I'm going to be at the concert tomorrow night. Such a huge fan. And all the security guards were like, uh huh. We're doing a private tour right now. I'm like, okay. I called my husband. I'm like, honey, I just saw Usher in real life.
Look at you.
No, well Tracy usually puts that stuff up here.
Hold on, I, I need a minute too.
Sorry.
That's Ken.
Good evening. And I'm going to call our study sessions, uh, meeting to order for May 27th, 2025. Auburn City Council Study Session Scheduled for today at 5:30 will be held in person and virtually. Hannah, could you call roll please?
Deputy Mayor Rakes.
Here.
Councilmember Ammer.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Sturgis.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Tracy Taylor.
Excuse.
Councilmember Troutmanwell.
Here.
Thank you. The City Council will now adjourn into executive session per RCW 42.30.1101G to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employment employee. The length of time for executive session is five minutes. We will resume the meeting at 5:42. In addition to myself, Mayor Backus, the City Council, Deputy City Attorney Paul Byron will be required to attend. Burn, I'm sorry, will be required to attend.
So hot over here.
It is warm in here. It's very warm in here.
Can I get the Zoom link?
Do we have, Hannah, any agenda modifications?
No, Chair, we do not.
Any announcements, reports, or presentations?
No, Chair.
Okay, this portion of the agenda, I'm going to turn over to Councilmember Baldwin for the Public Works and Community Development Discussion Items.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Sorry, I'm trying to get this back up since you walked away. We will be looking at the 2024 State of Our Streets or SOS Report.
Yes, and we have James Webb, our Senior Traffic Engineer, and Bryce Beeson, who is our Transportation Systems Engineer, who'll be coming up and getting a reading about the State of Our Streets for 2024.
Good evening. For those of you who we haven't met before, I'm James and this is Bryce. And as Ingrid said, we're here tonight to present to you our 2024 State of Our Streets Report. The presentation, we will cover an overview of our street preservation programs, provide you with a summary of the condition of the street pavement through the end of 2024, talk about our current and future projects and next steps moving forwards.
So first I'll touch on what is SOS or State of Our Streets. State of Our Streets refers to the condition of the pavement surface of our roads and is only focused on the condition of the pavement. It is what the specific preservation funding sources are intended to be used for. This does not consider the condition of sidewalks, drainage issues, congestion, or safety issues. The streets includes all paved road, uh, surface roads maintained by the city. Alley's, private streets, and facilities owned and operated by other agencies, for example, State Route 164 by WashDOT, are excluded. Uh, this includes 238 centerline miles of city maintained streets and it includes roadways with asphalt and concrete pavement. So what is a pavement condition index? A pavement condition index, or PCI for short, is a rating based on the amount of deterioration visible on the pavement surface. PCI is rated on a scale from zero to a hundred, with a hundred representing brand new pavement and zero being effectively a gravel road. So the graph shown on the screen shows the general trend we see in PCI as pavement ages with the horizontal axis showing time and the vertical axis showing PCI. So pavement unavoidably deteriorates over time, but how quickly it degrades changes as it ages. During the early years after the roadway is paved, the visible deterioration of the pavement is minimal, as you can see based off the slope of the graph during the early years. As cracks begin to appear, the deterioration compounds on itself and the pavement begins to deteriorate faster. How quickly pavement degrades change, or excuse me, sorry. Pavement will stay in the, uh, good can range shown on the screen longer than the fair range. The good range is PCI of 70 to 100. The fair PCI range is 40 to 70 and the poor range is zero to 40. So with our street preservation program, we separate the different, uh, pavement types into these three categories. So what do these PCI values look like? First shown on the screen is a PCI of 100, which is essentially a brand new paved asphalt roadway. Jumping down to the next, uh, is a PCI of 70, which shows some minor cracking. This is on the range of the good condition category heading into the fair condition category. Next is a PCI of 40. You're starting to see some of the, the cracks forming together and there's greater deterioration. This is on the edge of the fair category, starting to enter the poor condition category. And lastly, this is a PCI of less than 10. You're seeing intense alligatoring and the roadway is essentially at failure. So jumping back to our PCI of 70 that's highlighted on the screen, this is an example of our target PCI for all streets. And the next slide will go into details as to why this is desired. So the right treatment at the right time summarizes this, this concept and the strategic use of funds is vital to yield the most pavement life at the best possible condition. So during the early years of a pavement's life cycle, when it's in the good condition category, we're able to prolong the time that the pavement stays in the good condition by sealing small cracks and doing minor patching when necessary. So, uh, this treatment is about $20 a square yard. Keep in mind the cost per square yard as I go down the slide. So starting around a PCI of 70 and extending down to approximately a PCI of 40, we consider varying degrees of resurfacing to restore the pavement to this new light condition. As you can see on the screen, by performing these different preventative maintenance treatments, we can then rehabilitate the pavement to get it back up into that good condition category for $30 a square yard, ranging to $50 a square yard. Below a PCI of 40, it becomes increasingly infeasible to repair pavement through resurfacing and rather the entire pavement needs to be reconstructed. So as you can see, jumping down to a full rebuild, the cost per square yard jumps up four times compared to the major patching with grind and overlay. So this is the motivation behind having a target PCI of 70. In striving to keep the majority of our roads close to 70, we seek to preserve the pavement while it is in the good or fair categories so we can avoid the need for an expensive reconstruction. Now I'm going to go over a summary of our, uh, current street conditions. So these dials show the state of our street as of the end of December 2024. Each dial shows the average PCI, number of equivalent lane miles and the percentage of roads in the good, fair, and poor condition for local streets, all streets combined, and arterial and collector streets respectively. As I mentioned previously, I talked about an equivalent lane mile for background. An equivalent lane mile is one lane of road that is one mile long and 12 feet wide. So as you can see, our local streets are currently averaging a PCI of 71, which is exceeding our target of 70. Arterial and collector streets are averaging a 57, which is below the target. And overall, all city streets are at an average of PCI of 64. So for comparison, uh, the PCI values last year in 2023 were locals at a 73, arterials and collectors at a 57, and a 65 overall. So although the average PCI has gone down for our arterials and collectors, this does not include projects completed early this year or underway in 2025. Local streets have decreased towards the target PCI consistent with previous modeling projections. Additionally, approximately 20 equivalent lane miles of arterials and collectors were reclassified to the local streets as a part of this year's comprehensive transportation plan update, which may have influenced the PCI values for each different roadway classification group. Lastly, these PCI values are based on modeling projections from when we last collected data in 2021. And we are currently in the process of recollecting PCI data this year to recalibrate our model to become more accurate with our PCI calculations.
So I am now going to speak about our two, uh, separate programs and how those are funded. So first of all, we have our local street preservation program. This is funded through a combined 1% utility tax on city utilities, which includes water, sewer, storm, and solid waste, and also private utilities such as PSC and Comcast, um, and an additional $150,000 a year that's transferred in from the city utility funds, so from water, sewer, and storm. And that gives us a total of $2 million a year in local street preservation funding, which is, uh, the amount of funding that was shown from the previous modeling effort to maintain the local street system at the target PCI of 70. And then the, uh, classified arterial collector preservation program, uh, slightly more complicated. So that previous modeling effort also identified, uh, a funding need for these types of streets. And the annual funding from that effort was identified as $5 million per year. So, you know, significantly more than the local street requirement. And that was identified to hit that PCI target of 70 over a 20-year period. So as you saw from the dashboard earlier, we're not at the target yet. We need to invest more to move the needle up to get to the target. The funding for this program, uh, is from a combination of sources. You can see the, uh, the red bottom of the bar, first of all, is a one and a half percent tax on city utilities. So again, that includes water, sewer, storm, and solid waste. Then there is an additional 0.1% sales tax revenue that was enacted by the Transportation Benefit District. That generates just over $2 million a year. And then the remaining portion of the funding that we need is made up from grant funds that we pursue and secure as we are able to. Grant funding is highly competitive. It's becoming more so. It's harder to get those grant dollars. We've also found that because we've been successful in the past, the kind of candidate pool that we can apply for funding for has also decreased. So we've gotten our most competitive streets funded and now we're kind of on our second tier of streets, which are less competitive, which also then makes it harder to get that funding. So you can see in the blue, um, for 2025, we have just over a million and a half dollars in secure grant funding. Of 2026, we have, uh, 865 secured and then another 835 that we're still going to pursue funding for. In 2027, we have $1.75 million of secured grant funding with an additional project that we are going to pursue funding for. Beyond 2027, there is no secured grant funding at this time. And that's just because of how far out the competitions allow us to compete for funding for. We'll be looking for 2028 funding, um, the beginning of 2026 is our next opportunity to pursue that.
All right, uh, I'm going to jump back in and talk about projects that have been completed in 2024 and planned future projects for, uh, 2025 and beyond. So the first shown on the screen is the local, 2023 Local Street Preservation Program or Project, excuse me, that performed a full depth grind and overlay on Olympic Street Southeast, 17th Street Southeast, and 13th and 14th Street Southeast. Its construction was done in 2024. Here's what it, the roadway looked like before. And then here are some after photos of the new asphalt. Future local street preservation projects include the 2025 Local Street Preservation Project, which will reconstruct 33rd Street Southeast between M Street Southeast and O Street Southeast. And it'll reconstruct O Street Southeast between 33rd Street Southeast and 37th Street Southeast. The 2026 Local Street Preservation Project will reconstruct J Street Southeast between Auburn Way South and 17th Street Southeast. It'll reconstruct 8th Street Southwest from C Street Southwest to the end of the road. And lastly, it'll reconstruct 4th Street Southeast from R Street Southeast to S Street Southeast. Jumping over to our arterial and collector, uh, program. In, uh, 2024, we completed a grind and overlay on Lake Taps Parkway and Sumner Taps Highway from Lakeland Hills Way to 16th, 16th Street South, 16th Street East. Here's what the roadway looks like now after construction was completed in 2024. In twenty twenty-four, we also completed a reconstruction of R Street Southeast from Thirty-third Street Southeast to Thirty-seventh Street Southeast. This project also included new curb, gutter and sidewalk. Here's the after photo. And lastly, in twenty twenty-four, we completed an arterial patching project. This involved patching on Third Street Northeast before and after. Twelfth Street Southeast before and after. And lastly, A Street Southeast and Twenty-ninth Street Southeast. Um the patching on A Street Southeast was identified in order to get the road ready for a future grant-funded uh grind and overlay project that is coming in twenty twenty-seven. So jumping up to future projects, in twenty twenty-five, we plan to um grind and overlay C Street Southwest from West Main Street to the GSA Signal. In twenty twenty-five, we plan to um grind and overlay A Street Southeast between Lakeland Hills Way and Thirty-seventh Street Southeast with construction in twenty twenty-five. In twenty twenty-six, we will be performing a grind and overlay um from the GSA Signal south to Ellingson Road. In twenty twenty-seven, there's a planned project uh to grind and overlay Lake Taps Parkway from Sumner Taps Highway East to Hundred Eighty-Second Avenue East near the city limits. And lastly, in twenty twenty-seven, we will preserve and restore A Street Southeast between Seventeenth Street Southeast and Thirty-seventh Street Southeast, which goes in line with the patching project that we completed earlier this year on A Street Southeast. So uh what's next? First, we are going to work on finalizing the scope for future projects. The link, the first link on the page can take you to the city website where we have an interactive map that you can go and click on uh previously completed preservation projects, projects currently in construction, and those planned for the future that I have shown uh on the previous slides. Uh we're gonna continue to pursue grant funding per for preservation, specifically as James talked about, related to the arterial and collector street program. Uh we're gonna track new revenue streams versus our projections to determine if the established funding needs are being met. As I mentioned earlier, we are collecting PCI data now to evaluate uh program funding needs and recalibrate our modeling. Uh this information will be published in the summer twenty twenty-five Auburn Magazine. And lastly, our webpage has been updated with our twenty twenty-four SOS information that we've talked about today. And the link on the screen will take you to that website as well. So uh with that, we can field any questions now.
James and Bryce, thank you very much. Uh council, do we have questions?
How often do you guys drive around in neighborhoods and look at the streets from? I I go to Holy Family Church and sometimes I take the small streets. And uh there was two of them there and I can't remember the, it's uh AD, you know, but there's one road that is really bad, um lots of bumps and everything. Then the next one, you guys put speed bumps on there, looks really nice. But then you go to another one and there's a lot of potholes and stuff like that. How often do you guys fix those neighborhoods?
So we we don't have the time to go out and drive the streets um just to see how they are. For things like that, we rely on um requests we get from the public, uh feedback we get from M and O on locations where they have to do repeated maintenance. Um we will go and look at those in response to those uh that information um for tracking purposes. Um but in terms of looking at all the streets citywide, that's kind of what Bryce spoke about, where we hire a uh a company that comes out and drives all the streets and collects all that data on our behalf. And then we will put that information into our GIS system so we can see how things are looking, how things are changing over time and use that to help direct the program and the investments moving forwards.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Uh Councilmember Sturges.
We could kind of tag off of that. So um I completely, you know, trust your guys' engineering brains who have knowledge and expertise in this area, which I do not, um I just drive on the roads. Um and so what percentage of, I guess, eh do we allow for um a certain amount of not planned? To where we have a plan, we know that in the next three years, this is what we want to do. But we also know that so-and-so is gonna call and say, my street has six potholes and I really want them fixed. Do we tell them that, nope, you can't do that till twenty thirty? Or do we have a certain allocation of, you know, this may not be on our big strategic plan, but or our our long-range plan? However, we have some room to be able to make some one-off changes.
It's very challenging us for us to do to to move like a whole new street into the program. One, because of the funding, we we program what we have, we don't really sit on some of the money just in case. It also, the design process for replacing these roads is like we're starting to design this year for the twenty twenty-seven project. So it's, we can't be that responsive because of the level of effort that it takes to to put these projects together and do them right the first time. For um smaller issues like potholes or minor things, um crack sealing, uh we rely on our maintenance operations staff to take care of those as they can. Um and as I explained a minute ago, if they have locations that are repeat locations that they have to keep going back to, to do the same things over and over again, that's an indication to us that there's something more going on or that it's at the point where it does need a more extensive treatment. They will then let us know and we can consider that in our future planning. But even if we know about, I mean, we have more streets than we can take care of in any one project. So there's a lot of coordination that goes on between what we think is appropriate, based on where the pavement condition is. But then also locations where M and O have to go out repeatedly and take care of things, but also the utility needs um for replacement under the pavement. Because it doesn't make sense for us to go rebuild a road next year to have water then come out the year after that and go, oh, we're we're gonna put a new water line in the street and dig up our brand-new road. So there's a lot of time and consideration that goes into these. So we're not able to do that on a big scale.
I think maybe part of that question is if there are constituents who are having issues with potholes on their road or certain things on their roadway, it might not fit into this plan, but they could always reach out to the See Click Fix app. Uh would be the most direct way for them to get sort of direct resolution for more minor issues.
Yeah, definitely.
Could I, I circles where those streets are. Could I just give it to you so you can look?
This is a great map, by the way.
Counsel, do we have more questions on this topic?
All right, uh I have just a couple of quick ones. Uh the first is uh with the street conditions and kind of the rate of decline that we saw, which is, you know, natural with anything that's having lots of vehicles over it and weather conditions and different things, is um would it be street speeds as a factor for deterioration at all, or is it more about weight of vehicles?
Um i- it's, speed doesn't have any bearing on how quickly a road deteriorates. It's about the amount of traffic that uses the road and the weight of the vehicles that use the road. So one big truck is the equivalent of a a certain number of passenger cars. So we we always look at things in terms of the number of passenger cars in equivalents that are on a road. So the more heavy vehicles you have, the more that number increases exponentially and the quicker the road deteriorates. And we we account for that in the design of the pavement that we are building. So a a busier road will get a heavier duty of pavement, so it still lasts the same amount of time.
Very good. Okay, and then one last one and we'll let you go. With the plan, right? Because like you said, there's only so many streets can be tackled annually. Um and the different levels of response that are needed with the different cost per square foot. You know, we're a city that's been around for, you know, hundreds of years, well, not hundreds, but uh thank you, for a long time, right? Is there ever uh intentionality or a strategy to let certain streets get down to a lower threshold? Because, you know, to your point about the quality of the cement, that you know that it's gonna need a deeper, you know, restoration or maybe a better foundation going forward?
I I don't know that it's intentional to let them go. Um I mean, it is the preservation program, so we do the best we can with the funding that we have and those other competing um needs. Um and we are looking at like a mix of treatments where we can, we want to keep things as good as possible. But we recognize that there are roads that have gone too far and need reconstruction, so it's kind of balancing out those needs. Yeah, so not not intentionally.
Okay.
But there are streets that are in that condition that are gonna take a bigger project to make right that, yeah.
By nature of the history of the street. Okay. I thought there might be, I was just curious.
All right, uh council, last call, any questions? All right, uh James and Bryce, thank you so much for your presentation.
I'm gonna stop. But thank you.
Let me uh move us on to our next item on the agenda, uh which is going to be the uh twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one transportation improvement program, AKA the TIF program, I believe.
So um I believe we skipped one item.
You're right, let me take a step back. So coming up next on the agenda is the Transportation Impact Fee uh Program Overview.
And we have Jacob Sweeting, our city engineer, and James is still with us uh to talk about this overview with you on our traffic impact.
Great, thank you. My presentation almost got a whole lot shorter, but
Sorry.
Hello, Jacob Sweeting, City Engineer, Assistant Director of Public Works, and you just met James Webb. So tonight, we uh also have on the agenda the Traffic Impact Fee Overview. We're gonna be talking about our Traffic Impact Fee Program, also called TIF. Uh a summary of what we're gonna be talking about tonight. We're gonna talk about why we have traffic impact fees, what their purpose is. We're gonna talk about the traffic impact fees in Auburn, the history of the fees in Auburn and what they're used for. We're gonna uh do a little comparison to other uh agencies and how they have traffic impact fees. We're gonna look at that scenario, what if we had no traffic impact fees, what would that look like? Uh we're gonna summarize an update that we're working on to the traffic impact fees and the Traffic Impact Fee Program and the code. And then talk about uh what the next steps are for the Traffic Impact Fee Program in Auburn. So uh traffic impact fees start with the Growth Management Act. The GMA, as we call it, was adopted in nineteen ninety. The goals of the Growth Management Act were to encourage development in urban and suburban areas to reduce urban sprawl and to provide for uh transportation and o- other uh infrastructure uh that would provide support for that growth and development. Uh in Auburn, uh the counties, King and Pierce Counties, set growth uh and population targets uh for us to try to reach and concur with the Growth Management Act. So that growth and development uh increases the need to move people and goods from one place to another on the transportation system. Those movements are what we call trips. Trips can take place in cars, trucks, buses, bikes or on sidewalks. Uh for keeping track of the available capacity in our transportation system, we primarily focus on those trips that are actually done in vehicles. We also um we we look at, when we're when we're looking at the capacity of our transportation system, we usually look at the uh peak commute times, so either the AM or the PM, peak hour trips, we call them. So that's when we have, we see the most number of those vehicle trips on the roadway system. And those AM and peak, AM and PM peak commute times. Uh we also look at trying to support shifting some of those vehicle trips out of the peak uh commute times. Uh you'll hear a little bit more about that a little later on tonight. And we also look at something called mode shift. We try to support encouraging some of those trips to go from vehicles uh onto uh bikes or walking or on the transit, on the buses, or a combination of of all of those. So ultimately, growth and development creates the need, it creates more trips and increases uh the demand on our transportation infrastructure. So traffic impact fees, they help pay for the transportation projects that help provide for those trips that are needed to serve that growth and development. So currently, those projects that we have that are funded by the Traffic Impact Fees are focused primarily on increasing that vehicle capacity. So the number of trips that are generated by development activity are used to calculate the traffic impact fee to be paid by that development, which results in a fee that is proportional to the size and the scale of the development project and ultimately, the development project's impact on the transportation system. A smaller development project that generates less trips has a smaller traffic impact fee. A larger project, Costco, Walmart, something, has a much larger impact fee. And that's where we get the proportionality. So it seems like traffic impact fees or TIF alone may be a good way to build out our transportation system uh infrastructure to uh meet all the needs of growth and development. And certainly, it does provide a good solid basis for doing so. Unfortunately, uh it can't be the only mechanism of funding our 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 transportation system because there's rules associated with the impact fees that restrict the amount that we can collect. For instance, we cannot collect impact fees for development that occurs out, that occurs outside the city. So trips that are generated uh from anything that is from a home that's built outside the city, a trip comes from that home into this downtown like we want it to, we can't collect impact fee for that home. Uh we also can't uh collect impact fees for existing development that was in place prior to the Impact Fee Program or uh that was in place prior to the actual collection of the TIF. So just those two factors alone restrict us from collecting about sixty-five percent of what we actually need to collect to build out those transportation projects. So that's where things like uh grants and other revenue sources come into play to fully fund the program. Uh but the TIF program gets us about thirty-five percent of the way there to fund that growth and development projects. So as we collect those traffic impact fees, uh we program those transportation projects into our Transportation Improvement Program, our TIF, which again, you're gonna hear about later tonight, uh based on meeting concurrency needs, uh such that we prioritize improvements where we are having growth and development and where facilities are approaching or at their capacity. So next, James is gonna talk about more about how traffic impact fees are developed.
Yeah, thanks, Jacob. So there are a number of steps that we go through to set our traffic impact fee rate. The first is to look at our uh existing level of service uh throughout the city. So the figure on the right shows the map from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, which was adopted in December twenty twenty-four, that set our level of service standards um for our transportation infrastructure. Uh the map, all of the dots show one of the intersections that were studied in that plan. Um this is for twenty twenty-two, the existing condition in the plan. And what that shows is that thirteen of our study intersections are already not meeting that level of service standard. So there are thirteen intersections where um the traffic impact fee cannot be used to make improvements. So those are things that will have to do with those other funding sources that Jacob mentioned. Um but this sets the baseline that we measure everything from in terms of that growth and development and the impacts that that growth and development is expected to have on the transportation system moving forwards. So the next part of that is how many trips is that? So again, this is all information from that uh Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Um we receive targets for growth from the region, um from PSRC. Uh this shows the what those targets are compared to where we stand under the existing condition. So the twenty twenty-two levels of service has all the trips from the dark green bars. So those thirty-three thousand homes, those almost forty-eight thousand jobs, which equates to those twenty-three thousand AM trips and just over thirty thousand PM trips. which equates to those twenty-three thousand AM trips and just over thirty thousand PM trips. Once we get that information from PSRC, which is the light green columns to the right, um, so a thirty-two percent increase in households through 2044 and a almost four, a forty-four percent increase in employment throughout the city. So we have those targets. We then take that information and turn it into our land use plan, which is also an element in the comprehensive plan that was adopted last year to determine where those new houses and where those new jobs are going to be and the types of houses and the types of jobs that those are going to be. Once that's been spread around the city, that's then turned into trip generation. So each of those new households, each of those new jobs, depending on the type, generates additional trips on the transportation system. And you can see that that growth is anticipated to increase AMP car trips by twenty-eight percent or an additional sixty-four hundred trips or a thirty-seven percent increase in the PM peak, an additional eleven and a half thousand trips. So that gets added on to that 2022 existing condition that um was on the previous slide. That gives us our twenty.
Sorry, James, did you have a question?
Can we ask questions while they're doing or would you rather wait until it's completed?
Do preference.
No, go ahead.
That's fine. I had a question on um the AM uh peak time. Is that, um, what do you mean about AM peak time? Is that from twelve AM to six, seven AM?
So the AM, the AM peak and the PM peak are a one-hour period. And the AM peak is the highest hour between seven AM and nine AM. And the PM peak is the highest hour between four PM and six PM. So when we talk about the peaks, it's the one hour in that two-hour window that has the most traffic on the transportation system.
Thank you.
Um, so we take all of those growth trips from the previous slide and add them on to the 2022 existing condition. And that gives us our forecasts for 2044. And again, we look at those levels of service at all of those study intersections in the plan, compare them to the adopted level of service standard from the plan, and use that to identify locations where we expect to have an intersection that doesn't meet the standard with that growth and development in place. So you can see here, by 2044, we anticipate twenty-two of those intersections to not be meeting the adopted level of service standard. So with each of those locations identified, we take on the task of identifying, of developing an improvement project for each of those to be able to return those traffic operations to meet the adopted standard. Some of those are pretty minor things, some of them are really significant things. Each of those projects that gets developed for all of those intersections, we come up with a cost estimate for. Um, and that sets the, the amount of funding that we need by 2044 to address all of these level of service deficiencies to accommodate that growth and development. Now, as Jacob explained, only a portion of that is able to be funded with traffic impact fees. And then a portion of it is made up from grants and the remainder from other funding sources. But we, for each of those projects and each project cost, we break it down into the portion of that cost that is eligible for the TIF um and where we anticipate grant funding to be something we can pursue and hopefully be successful. And those are the funding sources, we spread them, we estimate how much money we'll have and then distribute it across those projects with the goal of being able to fully fund all of these projects by the time we get through the end of that 2044 comp plan period. This is a highlight of some of the significant projects that we have been able to accomplish with the traffic impact fee revenue that we've collected since the program was started. Overall, the program's collected about twenty million dollars in revenue. We have been able to leverage that um through loans and grants and other means into about a hundred and thirty-one million dollars' worth of transportation projects. Um, and I'll quickly run through some of the big ones. So they help fund the M Street Grade Separation Project, the A Street Northwest Corridor Completion Project, multiple projects on Auburn Way South, uh, along the fringes of the uh McCleish Casino and to the east, uh, the widening of Two Seventy-seventh Street, uh, F Street Non-Motorized Improvements, the roundabout at Twenty-Second and I Street, uh, the realignment of Garden Avenue, which is currently under construction, um, the new traffic signal at Tenth Street and A Street Northwest, which was recently turned on, uh, widening of Forty-Ninth Street Northeast, um, which will be in construction later this summer, uh, East Valley Highway Widening, which is currently in design, a new roundabout at the bottom of Lee Hill Road at a Hundred and Fourth, which is currently in design, and a new roundabout at Three O Fourth and a Hundred and Sixteenth up on Lee Hill, which is also starting design. Um, and those are all the locations of those projects throughout the city. So quite a significant uh benefit as a result of us collecting that traffic impact fee revenue.
All right, so now I'm going to talk specifically about the Traffic Impact Fee Program in Auburn, uh, starting with the history of the Impact Fee Program. So prior to the Traffic Impact Fee Program in Auburn, developers still had to mitigate their impacts on the transportation system, but it was much more complicated and sometimes more expensive. So in some cases, development projects where they triggered an impact to an intersection or a corridor had to build out that project in order for their development project to move forward. So they actually had to make those improvements. For larger projects, uh, say a large subdivision, sometimes that worked and they could pencil out and actually move forward with the project. A lot of other smaller projects simply couldn't happen. They didn't move forward because those projects, those transportation improvements were simply too expensive. Another alternative to that that was in place were traffic mitigation agreements. So a developer would come in, they would do an analysis to show where they had all the impacts, and they would in turn to an agreement with the city where they would fund a little piece of each one of those projects. And when those projects moved forward, they would provide the uh proportional funds for that. The challenge with that is that we were often left in situations where projects wouldn't get fully funded. So those improvements never actually got built in accordance with the timeframe that they were scheduled because the city wasn't able to collect enough funds to fully fund that project to complete it within the six-year period that's required for concurrency. So that, that approach was problematic. We also had, um, prior to the Traffic Impact Fee uh Program being, going into effect, we actually saw a preview of what it could look like when Lakeland Hills started developing. The Planned Unit Development Code, PUD, as we call it, incorporated in a set uh scale of traffic impact fees associated with each type of development that was planned in Lakeland Hills. Uh, and that was really our first glimpse of kind of how the uh Impact Fee Program might work on a larger, well, that was on a small scale, but how we might apply it on a larger scale. And on the screen, you see that, that pink area on the map is that Lakeland PUD area, which is still in effect today. Uh, we're still collecting a small amount of PUD uh mitigation funds for that, but is definitely nearing its, its completion of the development that was planned with that code. So the Auburn's uh full Traffic Impact Fee Program was first adopted by the City Council in 2001. So the TIF Program is defined in Auburn City Code Chapter nineteen point zero four, which was modeled after the state law in RCW Chapter eighty-two point zero two. So per the current program, a TIF or Traffic Impact Fee Assessment is generated by any permitting or licensing activity that generates peak hour trips in the city's transportation system. Uh, so that could be a building permit, that could be a business license, anything that shows the indication that a development activity is going to be putting more of those peak hour trips onto the system. Uh, the traffic impact fee is determined using the rates adopted in the fee schedule, which James just uh explained how we come up with that per-trip rate. Uh, and then we estimate a number of trips that a development activity is going to generate on to the roadway system. Multiply the two together and that's the fee. Uh, the current code also has a heavy truck adjustment factor. So those types of development activities, like large warehouses that are putting large trucks on the, on the system, uh, there's a, uh, another incremental fee that's added on to the impact fee in the fee schedule. So our program also currently offers a deferral program, uh, which is required per the state law. This deferral isn't putting it off for years, it's often just a few months. It basically says instead of paying the impact fee when your building permit is issued, uh, you can defer that to be when your actual building is complete and you're getting ready to start your business, you're getting ready to move in the house. So it can offset that uh by, by sometimes a few months, sometimes longer. And then also, uh, we have, offer credits for existing land use. So where you have an existing home or existing business that's expanded or being replaced, there is a credit for that land use and the trips that are already on the, uh, transportation system. Uh, and you're just paying the incremental difference of the increase from what the existing land use is. There are exemptions to the traffic impact fees that are listed in the code, primarily associated with development or growth activities and building permits that do not uh generate peak hour trips on the transportation system. Uh, a lot of those are just kind of basic alterations that don't, don't create a new dwelling unit or don't, don't create a new uh commercial uh unit. So I wanted to look more specifically at traffic impact fees in downtown. So right about the same time in 2001, when the Traffic Impact Fee went into effect, the City Council also adopted the Downtown Plan. Uh, that plan included an exemption for traffic impact fees in the downtown area, which is the green area shown on the map. So in accordance with state law, when that traffic impact fee was exempted and the traffic impact fees that would have been paid by that development activity happened, uh, the city actually had to pay that traffic impact fee from its general fund into the Traffic Impact Fee Program to help pay for those projects. So it wasn't like, uh, the money just didn't uh come in anywhere. It was actually paid by the city for those transportation projects, uh, for that exemption. So that approach, uh, for the full exemption for the downtown was in place until about 2007. In 2007, uh, the exemption was modified to only apply to what was called the Catalyst Block Areas, uh, which are shown in blue on this map. And the exemption for the Catalyst Blocks was in, in effect until about 2017. So uh, going back to 2007, when the full exemption for the downtown uh was removed, starting in 2008, uh, we actually modified the impact fee schedule to include a reduction in the trip fees for downtown development uh associated with uh more trips being associated with transit and walking and biking in the downtown area. So that reduction still exists today. It averages about a twenty-five percent reduction for traffic impact fees in the downtown area because of uh the likelihood that more trips are being uh done on buses and on the sidewalks and on trains and bikes rather than in those vehicles. So uh, another, uh, uh, in the orange on the map, there's another uh reduction that happened for a short time. So in the last half of 2008, there was an accessory Catalyst Block Area uh where there was a temporary fifty percent reduction in the traffic impact fees for development on that block, which is now complete.
So I'm going to give you a quick overview of where we're at with the current fee program. So fees have not changed since January of 2024. Um, the current per-trip fee downtown is about forty-five hundred dollars a trip, um, which reflects that average twenty-five percent reduction that Jacob just mentioned. Uh, citywide, the fee per trip is right at about six thousand dollars. What that means in terms of the fees that people are paying for a single-family detached residence, um, that equates to about, just about sixty-five hundred and seventy-five dollars for a new single-family detached home outside of downtown uh versus about fifty-three hundred dollars for a single-family unit downtown. Um, so that shows that on average, a single-family home generates more than one trip during the PM peak. That's why those numbers are higher than the per-trip fee. Another example, a fast food restaurant with drive-through. The citywide fee is about sixty-six dollars a square foot. With the reduction for downtown, that brings it down to about forty-nine dollars a square foot. So um, if I were to want to build a new fast food restaurant with drive-through somewhere in Auburn, and that were about a three thousand square foot restaurant, the citywide fee for that would be um a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And downtown, it would be a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Um, as you can imagine, fast food restaurant with drive-through generates a lot of trips. Um, another example would be just a small retail unit. Um, the fee citywide for that is about eighteen dollars a square foot versus thirteen downtown. Um, so again, that same three thousand square foot example, uh, citywide, the fee for that would be fifty-four thousand dollars. Downtown, it would be reduced to thirty-nine thousand. Um, as Jacob spoke about, we do uh have credits for previous uses. Um, the credit always stays with the parcel that the previous land use was on, was, was occupying. You can't move it, you can't take it with you somewhere else, it stays where, where it was. We give credits for the removal of buildings or businesses that made a previous TIF payment or a credit for a previous use, um, if it was in place prior to the beginning of the Traffic Impact Fee Program. Um, and those are used to reduce the, offset the new fee. Comparing that to some of our neighboring jurisdictions, um, Auburn is shown in green and that's our right around six thousand dollar per-trip fee. Um, you can see Renton, Kent, Federal Way all have per-trip fees that are higher than us. Um, the statewide average is very slightly lower, at just over fifty-seven hundred dollars. And Pualup has a lower fee at forty-five hundred dollars per trip. Um, there's a big difference in the fees uh throughout the state. Currently, the lowest assessed is for Oak Harbor, um, at about nine hundred dollars per trip. Whereas North Bend is up above fifteen thousand dollars per trip. So there's a huge range. Um, it's very dependent on the growth, the number of trips that that fee is spread across, but also the need. So how much money do they need to collect to build all the improvements that they need to accommodate the growth and development that's forecast? So North Bend either has very little growth or a lot of projects that they need to fund. Whereas Oak Harbor may be the reverse. But yeah, um, and of all of the agencies throughout the state that charge traffic impact fees, there are seventy-four cities and five counties which currently have fee programs. Twenty-one of those uh have reductions for um downtown development, including Federal Way and the City of Kent on this chart. Pualup and Renton do not. So we're kind of in the middle in terms of uh both our approach and the fees that we're currently charging.
So we're going to briefly look at what would happen if Auburn no longer had a Traffic Impact Fee Program. So you might imagine for a moment that without traffic impact fees, there'd be all sorts of affordable housing. Uh, maybe restaurants, retail, commercial businesses would expand in Auburn and the redevelopment that we see in downtown would just continue and we would have a thriving Auburn. Unfortunately, that's probably the opposite of what would actually happen because as strange as it seems, the Traffic Impact Fee Program actually helps support affordable housing. It helps restaurants, retail, and other commercial businesses get started in Auburn and finally can benefit downtown redevelopment. So how can the fees that cost home builders, entrepreneurs, and other developers thousands of dollars actually be beneficial? The answer lies in that regardless if we have a Traffic Impact Fee Program or not, the concurrency requirement of the Growth Management Act still applies. If we are not collecting impact fees as development occurs to help build out transportation projects that provide for system capacity, the transportation system starts to fail. That is, more and more intersections and corridors will reach their capacity limits where any additional trips or any additional growth and development that generates trips would cause the intersection or corridor to fail or operate below the established level of service standards would need to be mitigated. At that point, it could be a single-family home, it could be a small retail store or a large subdivision. Regardless of the size of the project, if it generates a trip, it would have to mitigate and build that million-dollar project. So can you imagine being, going to build a single-family home, build your dream home? And you can't build it, the city says, hey, we have to, we can't issue permit because this intersection's failed. It's going to cost two million dollars to rebuild the intersection. The traffic impact fee program allows that two million dollar project to be paid for over time in bits and pieces as development happens proportional to the size of that development. If we don't do that, then those individual developments could be stuck paying for it. Now, an alternative, uh, James had mentioned how we come up with our traffic impact fees. Part of that is the level service standards. The city council could decide to adopt lower level service standards. That, I tell you, would have a detrimental effect as well. The standards that we have now are designed that, uh, it's a balance between having traffic moving through those, those peak congestion times at, at not necessarily a convenient and a rate that everyone says, hey, this, everything's great. It still is moving slow, but it's balancing out the costs of those, of those projects. So if we start lowering that level of service, that means more congestion, more backups. Uh, it means, uh, that, there, people won't be able to get to where they need to go. Goods and services won't be able to go, be delivered where they need to be delivered. Buses can't get to where they need to go, need to be. And that in itself will stifle the economic development that we want to encourage. So it's a balancing act. The better alternative is not a world without traffic impact fees, but one where the impact fees are fair, proportional, transparent and effective in maintaining concurrency with a reasonable level of service standard that supports ec- economic growth and vitality. So as we work through updating our traffic impact fee program, we're keeping those goals in mind. Uh, we're currently, uh, working to make sure that the program also aligns with the updated comprehensive transportation plan that has refined level service standards that now not only take into account the vehicles, but also how we move, uh, on our sidewalks, how bicyclists move throughout our community and also transit. This is called multimodal. You probably hear, say that quite a bit. So also, uh, in the process, uh, that James described, the comprehensive plan identified several new and modified projects that need to be built out over the next twenty years, uh, to accommodate that projected growth and to maintain the concurrency and provide the level service standards in our plan. The traffic impact fee program, uh, needs to be updated to encompass those projects. And then finally, uh, over the last few years, many, many state bills, legislations have been adopted, uh, and traffic impact fee requirements, they, they have modified the traffic impact fee requirements and, uh, we need to look at our program and update the program and our code, uh, to make sure that we are complying with all those requirements and addressing the implications of those requirements. We're not alone in this. Almost every other agency, uh, is going through and having to update their programs. One of those is specifically to providing some proportionality for impact fees associated with residential development. And we'll be, uh, coming back soon and talking more about that, the updates needed for that. So we're also working, uh, through the program and the fee schedule and the related code, uh, like I said, to make the program as transparent, flexible and predictable as possible. So our next steps, uh, on June ninth, uh, we'll come in, we'll be coming back once again to talk specifically about, uh, and updates required this year to the traffic impact fee schedule, uh, to comply with one of the, uh, bills that was passed associated with housing proportionality. Uh, followed on June sixteenth by the actual code adoption, um, and updating the feeds. I'm sorry, it won't update the code. It will adopt a revised fee schedule, uh, to accommodate that update. Uh, July twenty-eighth, that'll be a big discussion where we'll actually come back and talk about specific, uh, findings of our update to our program, proposed twenty-two, twenty-six fees and what those look like, uh, some restructuring, uh, and then also a code update that will be associated with those changes. Followed by August fourth, uh, when we will propose to have an ordinance considered for adoption, uh, to, to implement the new code. And then later this year in the fall, uh, the twenty-two, twenty-six fee schedule as a whole for the entire city will come back, uh, for city council consideration. With that, can I get any questions?
Council, do we have questions, uh, for Jacob and James?
What do you both see our fees being raised to?
I, July twenty-eighth, we'll come back with a good number for you. Right now, we're still going through the analysis. We're looking at the projects, the cost of the projects, uh, we're looking at the modeling. One thing I didn't talk about too much is we're looking at the downtown area. Uh, not just as we did before, as just going to twenty-five percent reduction for the transit, just right off the top, which is based off of, uh, a manual that we have, the IT manual. But we're actually modeling it as its own separate district and we're seeing how the trips move in and out of the downtown and that, how that might, uh, influence the fee that we would charge specifically to the downtown. So, uh, I can't throw out a number to you tonight for what that might look like, but definitely, uh, in July, we'll come back and have some more specifics for you.
Can I do a follow-up? There's no other questions? Uh, so we're specifically just right now focusing on the downtown?
No, the impact fee program in, in its entirety is being looked at. So the impact fee program for the entire city as well as specifically how we, uh, feed the downtown, development in the downtown. So we're looking at both.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I have a couple to run you through. Um, so my first question is, has council provided any direction that we would not support traffic impact fees being in place in Auburn?
It's an odd question for you to ask me what the council has provided. Are you asking us to provide the support to staff? Uh, I, cause I haven't heard any recommendation when they, I know what's been adopted and what's been discussed previously. Previously, the city council and the public works committees that, uh, that we've discussed the traffic impact these programs for, uh, have ultimately led to adoption of the program and, uh, adoption of the fee schedules that we have.
Okay. Um, if that's the case, then in the presentation, you know, we have a slide that's indicating a world without TIF, right? And to me, that stands out because it appears to be presented as though, you know, it's potentially a scare tactic. All right. And that's my personal opinion in how I'm interpreting what's being presented. I also heard some comments about what would presumably happen if we didn't have TIF. And what stands out to me is that the last time we had conversations around TIF and the fee schedule, the concerns that council brought forward were concerns that we were hearing from our business community about them having to relocate, having incredibly high fees that they were deeply concerned about as it posed, you know, risks to their business. I think that we all want to see positive economic development in Auburn. And I recognize that having traffic impact fees are a part of making sure that we have a mixture for funding so we can go get grant matches, so we can do the investment that we need in our city and infrastructure. I will say that the concerns that council brought forward were not about throwing TIF out. That was never on the table. What council asked about was how do we have more flexibility, which he indicated is one of the goals? How are we flexible? So when we have these bills that we give to people who are coming in for permits or business licenses, that they have flexibility in being able to pay those. We also asked for transparency because there was people who would get initial bills that were later able to come down after working with your department to be able to, to negotiate the credits and the exemptions and all of the things that were mentioned in the presentation. But what that does on initial receipt of a statement is saying, hey, you may owe us a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Hey, you may owe us fifty-four thousand dollars. And I think that for businesses, that can be very surprising and potentially overwhelming when they're just trying to get started. And so when we ask about how do we improve our process to have transparency, that was also a goal. I am very excited to see what you'll come back and present to us in that space of flexibility and transparency. Because this presentation did not cover those things. At no point have we really explored just throwing it out as a whole. So I don't like the context of what was presented to us indicating that that was somehow on the table. I don't think that has ever been on the table. What we asked for is what is the model from a programming perspective to make sure that we can have the infrastructure that we need, have the programs that we need, but that we don't scare business away, right? So that's my two cents about this topic and the presentation and what I'm looking for as far as proposals to come forward. So I am excited to see what that fee schedule is going to be. I'm excited to see how we can manage our process for licensing and permitting to be able to have those conversations upfront, maybe to do more publication about what credits, how they're handled, how those work, how exemptions work. And if we need to address any of the districting as far as areas that we want to see economic growth within the city and what those percentages might look like. So that's the type of collaborative, collective work that I'm hoping we can see and get to moving forward. But I do question a presentation that says a world without TIF like we're somehow throwing it out because I don't think that that was ever, ever something that this council wanted to do. Council, are there any other comments or feedback?
Just a question for clarification, uh, being the new person. Um, so how long ago was this that, uh, we were made aware as council of prior discussions?
So the transportation impact fees are typically updated on an annual basis as part of schedule and that's something that we go through and we vote on as a council. We had looked at it as part of the comp plan and we had had discussions throughout both the comp plan and the budget cycle related to fee schedules and how we address that and what we were hearing from different businesses within the community. Because we have two longstanding, uh, organizations that had come to council and said that they had concerns.
So just to provide a little clarification on that question. So the conversation around TIF usually happens at the same time that we're doing the tip update air, every year. So it'd be around this time annually that we talk about what that TIF fee proposal is going to be for the following year. And then that is actually, uh, voted on by council with the fee schedule in that October, September, October, November timeframe.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you. There were questions when this was brought up late last year of why do we have traffic impact fees? So the fact that Jacob and James showed in their presentation what it looks like without transportation impact fees was basically answering that question because a world without traffic impact fees is just that. The costs rise significantly. So as one of your council rules of procedure, you do not admonish staff. And I think you were dangerously close to doing that, Councilmember Baldwin. And that is not appropriate on the council floor or at any time. You can ask a question, but you do not admonish staff. That is your own council rule of procedure. They were simply answering questions that had been brought up in the past because I do recall, uh, hearing, why do we have traffic impact fees? And why do they have to be in those terms so high? And so I think it was very appropriate that they provided a slide that shared information on what it looks like as a world without TIF. Just to give you, maybe it is the full other end of the spectrum, but to provide you with that understanding of why we do have them because you are going to be asked in the community, why do we even have traffic impact fees? So that's why it was included. I think it was appropriate and I do think you owe them an apology.
I appreciate your feedback, Mayor. I'll speak to the reason I am firm on this, which is when that had come up in council, there was a reaction in that meeting where it was a question of whether TIF would be thrown out. And in that meeting, it was very clear that it was no, we're not trying.
You became a point of order. I'm sorry. No, I have, uh, rubber rules. I'm, as a person here sitting, I cannot handle you being hammering the staff. When the TIF brought to us, we had a study session. They brought it to us. We discuss it. This is in the past. We vote about it. They're sitting here to present what happened if we don't have it. That's the presentation. We have a question. They said we'd be coming to discuss the schedule update, then we need to talk to them about it after. I cannot sit here, hear the tone as a person who worked. This is not okay. I'm sorry. You're the chair. I use point of order to move on because I cannot handle it.
Thank you.
It's, it's a lot the way the tone.
Councilmember Amher, thank you for your feedback. I'll take that under consideration. Councilmember Trout?
I, um, I think that, uh, Councilwoman Baldwin said at the beginning that this is her opinion. And as a council person, um, it's our opinion to be able to speak up what we feel. But maybe the tone was a little bit, you know, harsh. But I thank you both, uh, for what you presented. As a new councilwoman being here, I'm sure it was very helpful for her as well to hear what, what would it be? But these are things that we have asked in the past and I thank you both for bringing it forward. And I don't think that we should be ch- chas casting a councilwoman for speaking her, her opinion. And, um, just thank you for bringing it and it will be helpful because these are some of the questions that I am hearing out there in the community right now, uh, on the impact fees and stuff. So you brought back some great, I, you know, information for me to be able to answer a lot of the questions. So thank you both for, uh, the presentation. I think we need to move on.
Thank you, Councilmember Trout. Do we have any other feedback or questions?
I do. Uh, so yes, I am the new one. Um, so, uh, I look to you and city staff as the experts, the, the subject matter experts who are doing the, the hard work every day. We're hearing from constituents. We're here to approve budget or policy to help facilitate you being able to do the great work that you do. So when you're looking at providing this update to us, it, to me, it was really great to see the perspective of what would a world look like without it versus why we need it. So thank you for that. But when you look at, uh, the support that you need in order to continue to move forward progress, um, for the betterment of our city, what are, what are you hoping for in, that we're taking away from this?
Well, I think, um, the main goal of this presentation tonight, uh, was to just educate and provide a reminder of what the traffic impact fee program is.
So awareness?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, the, the indications and the explanation of, of what we can't collect and what it would look like if we didn't collect
Okay.
is, it has direct implications on city budget. Because if, if growth and development is restricted and cannot happen in accordance with the projections that are handed to us by the counties, uh, not only are we not collecting the fees to, to build out what we need to build out, but we also become as, uh, not eligible for many of the grant programs that we are because we're not compliant with those growth targets or at least pursuing those growth targets. So there's direct budget implications that I think, uh, need to be thought about as a council. And, um, we just appreciate the opportunity to come tell you about the program, let you know that we've heard the request for transparency, for flexibility to look at this, and that is what we're striving to do. So when we come back in July, we'll have more information for you. We look forward to talking about some of those things.
Thank you very much because the conversations that I've had with different business owners and, and constituents over the last three years has been, they're okay with fees if they understand the why behind it. And so I feel like I'm able to walk away with this as a new council member, understanding the why. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sergeus. Councilmember Amher?
I want to say thank you for other TAF program city. It's so good to see like we're still the lower and we still, as a King County, to have this amount. It's me, like it's call for other people to come to work here, to stay away from Kent or Renton. That's the message when I look to the slide, like who want to work in Renton downtown? We have our downtown. So appreciate that you put the numbers. That was my best slide. Thank you.
Not that there's anything wrong with Kent or Renton.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. To wrap up my request and with the feedback of my colleagues and my mayor, I'm sorry for my tone. I am indeed frustrated at times with the information presented to us. And the frustration that I have is that I had felt it was conveyed in previous meetings, which may not have been relayed to you, is that we were looking for, how do we improve our process, very specific to outcomes related to better transparency for folks coming forward for licensing and permits? And how do we incorporate flexibility into the, into the things that we charge? things that we charge? So if a business can't pay it all in one go, that they could have payment plans or other options. And we were looking for staff to bring those options back to us, so we could envision what that path forward is. And so I also speak from a place where I have never had an expectation that these would be going away, but that I had heard concern in previous meetings that council would somehow do away with it. And I want to reiterate, that is not the case. I think we value the infrastructure of this community too much, and the work that happens is substantial. To make it happen, the feedback that I have is, we're hearing from the community that we need to, to do it better, that process. And so looking forward to what you bring back, bringing myself in check, so I shouldn't take my frustrations out on staff, but that is what I am in fact looking for, and I hope you'll give me the grace of accepting my apology. So with that, is there anything else on this topic? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you both so much.
Moving on to our next topic. We have-
You're still here?
Yes.
You got me for one thing.
I'm not allowed to leave today.
We will now be moving to the 2026-2031 Transportation Improvement Program.
Good evening again. Still James Webb, still your senior traffic engineer.
Still one for the-
The water's empty. Do you want me to get you more water? Okay.
It is hot in here.
It is warm in here.
It is very hot.
Okay, so I'm going to quickly run through the annual update to our Transportation Improvement Program, overview of the TIP, Transportation Improvement Program, I refer to it as the TIP. It is something we are required to put together every year by RCW 3577010. It is our six-year short-term plan for transportation facilities. It is a financially constrained plan. We only program revenue to projects that we reasonably anticipate to be able to collect. And we use the plan to identify our priorities for the next six years, program those funds that are available. It is something that we are required to have to show grant funding for grant applications. As we talked about in the SOS presentation, we use it to coordinate with our city utilities, but also with development activity, and it is used to feed into the capital facilities plan and the city budget. We also use it as the reporting mechanism for the transportation benefit district funds which we collect. The annual TIP update is something we are required to accomplish by the end of June every year. It's required to go through a public hearing process, which will be scheduled at an upcoming council meeting. We have taken it to the Transportation Advisory Board twice. The first meeting, we gave them kind of a high-level overview and reminder of what it, what it is and what it does and why we have it. And then the second meeting was to talk about the specific changes that are included in this year's annual update. Beyond the annual update, we are able to modify it throughout the year as needed. If that is something that we pursue, we bring it back through another public hearing and council adoption process. The annual update, we use to remove projects that have either been completed, that's typical, or to reflect changing needs and priorities. We use it as an opportunity to add new projects to the TIP, projects that we foresee applying for grant funding in the short term, but also emerging needs or funding changes. And we use it to modify projects that are currently on the TIP, to reflect changes to project scope, changes to either the funding side of the ledger, or changes to project costs, but also changes to project timing also. As part of this annual update, so the 26 to 2031 TIP, we're proposing to remove six projects, which have either been completed or will be under construction this year. Those include the downtown infrastructure project, which you've probably all seen just outside us. We also have a Lee Hill ITS expansion project that will be completed this year, the preservation of A Street Southeast between 37th and Lakeland Hills, which was back in the SOS presentation, also the 2025 local street preservation project, Stewart Road, Lake Taps Parkway Project, I can't remember what that is right now. Oh, there you go. And then the 49th Street Widening Project between Albany North and D Street Northeast. And there's a link in the slides to a map that presents all of the projects in the TIP, color-coded by the category that we put them in. There are then four new projects that we're proposing to add to the TIP.
No, no, that's okay. Councilmember Trout, did you have a question?
No, fine.
All right. We'll hold on.
Okay, I'll keep going. The first new project that we're proposing to add is an intersection improvement at the Albany South, 17th Street Southeast, and M Street Southeast intersection. This is a project that is included in the adopted comprehensive transportation plan. In that plan, it's Comp 22. It's a concept in the comp plan. We, the intent of this is to do some preliminary design, to really figure out what the project, what the improvement is going to look like to address the level of service issues at this intersection. And that will include coordination with Wash Dot, because it includes Albany South, which is also SR 164, which is a state route. The second is a new intersection project on C Street Northwest at Third Street Northwest. Again, this is a project that was identified in the recently adopted comprehensive transportation plan. This project will widen eastbound Third Street Northwest to add a left-turn pocket to match the westbound approach. This project is needed to do a couple of things. One, replace the existing signal, which is approaching the end of its service life. And then also to address a level of service deficiency at the intersection. So this project is needed to maintain concurrency, as we talked about in the TIF presentation. The capacity portion of the project is proposed to be funded with traffic impact fees. The signal replacement will be funded with monies that are provided to us for a signal replacement program, so exactly for this. As our signal infrastructure ages out, we need to replace it, so we have a little set aside pot of money that allows us to do that. So we're combining those two funding sources to accomplish this project, and design for this will start next year. The third project is a 2027 local street preservation project. The picture shows you the, one of the recently completed projects that did 13th and 14th Streets Southeast. We are currently working on finalizing the scope of that project with the Utility Group. It's funded from our local street preservation program, which is P2 in the TIP, and that's scheduled for design starting later this year through 2026, with construction of that project in 2027. And then the last is another preservation project. This is an arterial preservation project on West Valley Highway and 15th Street Southwest. Local funding for this will be provided from the arterial preservation program, which is P1 in the TIP. We anticipate pursuing grant funding to help supplement our local funds. We'll be looking at a transportation improvement board, a grant application later this year. This is a location that requires more than just a grind and overlay. It requires reconstruction, so that changes the grant competition, that this is a competitive project, and hence the TIB. If we're successful, we'll be starting design, well, we'll probably start design later this year anyway. If we're successful in securing grant funds, we'll be looking at construction in 2027 for this.
I'm going to be successful.
So do I. This summary chart shows how the funding is distributed across the different types of projects. In total, it's about $83 million of total projects that are included in the TIP. So about $30 million of that goes towards preservation of the arterial system, another 12-ish million, so, I mean, all in, about half of our transportation dollars go towards preservation, and the remaining portion goes to expanding and replacing infrastructure as needed. The second chart then shows how that $83 million is split between our different funding sources. So over the six years, the biggest portion of that comes from general transportation funds, about $26, $27 million. There's a more detailed breakdown of that in the TIP that you'll see. Grant funding is the next biggest portion, about $14 million of secured grant funding, but during the next six years, an outstanding need for another 13-plus million. And then the smaller amounts are TBD, traffic impact fees, real estate revenue, tax revenue, and other. As I mentioned at the beginning, we use the TIP as our annual reporting document for the transportation benefit district. As a reminder, the TBD is funded from a 0.1% sales tax increase that went into effect at the beginning of 2023 and was authorized for a 10-year period. That funding is used to provide for transportation improvements. We are required to report if project costs for any of the projects that are utilizing that funding increased by 20% or more. As I mentioned, we use the TIP to fulfill that reporting requirement, and right now we don't have any projects that fall into that category. If the TBD revenues that we're currently collecting don't meet the funding need for the programs, we have the ability to, we have the ability to collect additional TBD revenue through the enactment of a vehicle licensing fee. That may be something that we need to evaluate in the future if we're not able to secure those grant funds to meet that funding need. These are the projects that are currently utilizing that TBD revenue. They are all preservation projects, both. So we have the arterial preservation program, which is kind of the holding place for all of that revenue. And then as we develop specific projects, we move that money in to fund those individual projects. So I think these have all been mentioned already this evening. There's the C Street Preservation Project from GSA to Ellingson, a couple of, A Street Southeast Preservation from 17th to 37th. Both of those have federal grant matching dollars. The new West Valley Highway 15th Street Southwest Preservation Project, which I mentioned a couple of slides ago. And then M Street Northeast Widening from Main to Fourth Street Northeast, where we have some TBD revenue programmed to cover the replacement cost for the existing pavement. And then the same for our Street Southeast Widening from 22nd to 33rd Streets Southeast, where there's currently about $1 million of TBD money programmed to that project to pay for the replacement of the pavement. Next steps, this will be coming to the city council meeting on June 2nd to set the public hearing through a consent agenda item. On June 9th, if needed, we can come back to a second study session if there are questions that we're not able to address this evening. And then at the June 16th council meeting, there will be, the public hearing will be held, and the TIP will be adopted via resolution. That, I'll hand it back to you to see if there are any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions?
I have one that's been coming up quite often here lately, since I'm out there talking to people, septic tanks. How many areas in our city do we have that we still have septic tanks? Because roads have been resurfaced, or some lines have gone in there, and people are saying, you know, we would like to get hooked up to the septic tank, and, but they've already come through and they've already redone our roads and everything. So I'm just asking how many, I know my, where I live is kind of like a little dog leg, and all of them in that island, where I'm one of them, that's still on a septic tank.
So I'm going to take that one. So there are several little pockets of unsued areas around the city in different areas. And the way that our sewer utility is built is it doesn't have a fund to extend sewer into those unsued areas on the current ratepayer's cost. So typically, to extend sewer into an unsued area, it would require those folks that want that sewer to pay for that extension of that sewer. So typically, when we're going and doing roadway work in an unsued area, we will ask the neighborhood, "Do you want sewers?" Because there's a cost through a local improvement district that would be required for them to pay for those sewers. In the last, probably 10-plus years that we have done that, when we have done that work in those neighborhoods, none of the neighborhoods have opted to pay for the extension of sewers into their neighborhoods, and that is because it is a significant cost for them to do. So they can always come and ask that if they want to extend that sewer, but at this point, the policies that are in place that have been adopted through our system plan for the sewer do not allow us to use current ratepayer money to pay for those extensions.
Thank you. That's good to know, because you just educated me too, because if I want to do that, I'm going to want to pay that fee, whatever the fee is.
Well, and it's not necessarily, I mean, it could be paying the fee, it could be, so if it's a local improvement district, it would be entering into an agreement with the city, just for the city to build it at the property owner's cost, but it would not just be you in that neighborhood, it would be everybody that has the potential connect to that sewer and benefit from that sewer that would have to pay for that. Individual homeowners can come in and do that, but that's going to be a fairly significant cost, depending upon how long they have to extend that sewer, so how close are we to where they're at? Our policies do require that if somebody's septic system fails and they are within 200 feet of sewer, that they are required to connect to sewer, and that's a policy set and code by the council, so that's, that's why that's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, do we have other questions? And Deputy Mayor, I believe you had a question?
I'm going to bring Jacob back just for a minute. I promise it'll be an easy question.
Jacob, would you be willing to come back?
I'm a little slow learner tonight. No, I'm just kidding. I just have one quick question, because this has came up before, and I want to make sure I have the right answer. So for the new developments, say downtown, the new apartments and stuff, they pay the traffic impact fee, right, when they build?
Yes.
Okay, so then do their tenants, if they rent those out, have to pay another traffic impact fee to come in?
Oh, that's true. So in the case of residential housing, it's paid for when the occupancy is issued or when the building permit is issued, depending if there's a deferral or not. So typically, if you have, you have the developer, the builder, or the property owner paying that, or sometimes it's a home builder that's building it out, could be paying that and then passing along or distributing the cost how they, how they want to.
Okay.
But I think, Jacob, her question is more about the mixed-use development and the resident, the commercial development on the bottom floor.
Yeah, so that's-
Like across the street.
Right. Okay, thank you. That can vary. So certain developments have already accounted for and paid for certain land uses in those commercial areas, so that has been paid for. In other locations, it's just a shell that's been built, and until a land use comes in, and it can be determined how many trips are generated by that land use, a trip isn't, hasn't been paid and would be paid when that development comes in, either by the, the property owner or by the tenant, however that deal works out amongst those parties.
Okay.
So it can go either way.
Okay.
Can I add one more thing? I'm sorry, on that one. So it could also be where if they built out a shell, they may, we may have made an assumption as to what that commercial development is going to be in there, and the builder may have paid a certain fee. If another development comes in that has a higher impact than that fee was accounted for, we will provide the credit for what has been paid, but that development that goes in would have to pay that differential change between what was previously paid and what the actual impact is.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Councilmembers, do we have other questions on, very apparently, either the Transportation Improvement Program or the previous transportation impact fee, since we've been obliged with-
Piggyback on what Councilwoman Rakes just said, because that was also asked. Does that impact fee, has that been added to the renters of that building, or are we just talking about- Or are we just talking about the services, like you said, the shelves and the people come in? But when, aren't some of those condos, are they affected in that impact fee? No?
We couldn't know that.
Okay, that's a question that was asked, so.
So if I'm understanding where that question is coming from, so the residential development, when the builder builds that, they pay the traffic impact fee for that residential portion. When a tenant comes in, they're not paying us a traffic impact fee.
Okay.
But whether or not the developer has built that into the rates that they charge, that is something that they would handle on the private side.
That was the question. Thank you.
Councilmember Sturgis?
This is the corny new council member question. So Jacob and James, how long have you both been with the city?
That's an easy one. I've, I've been with the city since the fall of two thousand and twelve.
Okay, wonderful. And how about you, Jacob?
Going on eighteen years.
Okay, awesome. Reason I ask is because I am the newbie. And I also hear a lot from different community members, but you know, we have this kind of false consensus bias of we make opinions based on the few things we hear. And so I'm trying to stay true to my oath as a council member of understanding. You guys are the experts. You come in with your heart every day to do this work. And so how do we understand what you're doing? And then also, how do we communicate it to the public so they understand? And then how do we prioritize to make sure it's good for the best of everyone? So it's just those, I know it's a corny question, but it's important to me to understand how long you've been with us and, and why you, why you're a passionate employee of the city. So thank you.
Are we invited to your twentieth anniversary? I just want to make sure.
Sure.
All right, council, any other questions on the matters that have been covered related to transportation and streets?
We'll let Jacob go now.
Before we move on to the next item, is there any need for bioprene for council?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to take a five, five-minute break.
I want to make coffee.
To order, and I'm going to turn it back over to Councilmember Dogwin.
Next up on our agenda is the Commute Trip Reduction Plan and Code Updates.
And we have Veronica Dean with our deputy mayor, and we go through both the plan update and our code update.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Dean. I'm the transportation planner for the city. I've been with the city for nearly four years. Yeah, first I'll give a quick refresher on what is commute trip reduction. I don't think this has been before council for quite some time, so a refresher may be in order. So it is a state law that was originally passed in nineteen ninety-one and updated in two thousand and six. That was originally passed in nineteen ninety-one and updated in two thousand and six that requires employers to work with their employees to reduce the number and length of drive-alone commute trips. And we also refer to commute trip reduction as CTR. They can, the employers, the employees can reduce their number of drive-alone commute trips through mode shift that Jacob had mentioned previously. So that could be go from driving by themselves to carpooling, vanpooling, riding the bus or train, walking or riding their bike. So the law comes from, the, the state law comes from the Washington Clean Air Act and Climate Plan, which has the goals of improving air quality, reducing traffic congestion, and reducing the consumption of fossil fuels. So what is an affected, a CTR-affected business? This is when a business has a work site that has a hundred or more employees at a single work site that are full-time or thirty-five or more hours a week. They work two or more weekdays per week. They begin their shift between six AM and nine AM. They are in a position that is for at least twelve consecutive months, so like not temporary workers or seasonal workers. And the workers are not entirely remote. So in Auburn, we have fifteen CTR-affected work sites. Those employers include the City of Auburn, Costco Optical Lab, Dachshund Toyota of Auburn, Green River College, Hospital Central Services, Leonard's Metal, Inc., MultiCare, Orion Industries, Pro-Am Pack, Safeway Distribution, Skills, Inc., Boeing, UPS Distribution, and Zones. And the stars on the map on this slide show where those work sites are located within the city. So the Washington State law also requires that affected jurisdictions, which Auburn is one, to have a adopted CTR plan. So both the CTR plan and the city code that controls CTR within the city limits was last updated in two thousand and ten. So WashDOT, which administers the state law throughout the entire state, is now requiring all jurisdictions to update their local CTR plans. This graphic on the slide shows a bit of a timeline of what we've gone through so far while going through this process. Initially, the state did a state, an update to the state plan. We then, through that, they identified state performance targets and provided training to the jurisdictions on how to update their plans. Many jurisdictions, it's been quite some time since we've last updated our plans, so that required some technical assistance from the state to help us along. In our plan update, we also did some engagement with stakeholders and did some data gathering, drafted our plan. The WashDOT or the State Transportation Demand Management, or TDM, Technical Committee must approve each of the jurisdiction's plans. And our plan has been approved already by WashDOT. And so our final step is to bring it to council, let you know about the plan, and to have it adopted. And this will also include an update to the ordinance. I will be going over that later in this presentation. I mentioned that CTR, there are performance targets. As part of the plan, each jurisdiction must have a performance target. This is for all the employees in those CTR-affected work sites. What is, what is the goal we're striving for? What are we trying to, how are we trying to reduce the drive-alone commute? WashDOT provided jurisdictions with four options for our, for the jurisdictions to choose from for their performance target. The options were a drive-alone rate of sixty percent or less, a drive-alone rate of fifteen-point-five percent below the census performance in two thousand and nineteen. For Auburn, that would be sixty-seven percent. They could, jurisdictions could do a weighted average of, for something more locally specific, or provide another performance target. For the last two options, if we were to have chosen that, we would have had to present that to WashDOT and have that approved by them. However, we chose the second option, which is, which would give us a target of sixty-seven percent drive-alone rate. And from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-three, Auburn had a drive-alone rate of seventy-two-point-one-three percent. With this individual work sites, the drive-alone rates ranged from eighteen-point-eight percent to ninety-one percent. And so because of our past drive-alone rates, we felt option two was a reasonable target. It's both a mixture of aspirational and also could actually be done. And so that is why we opted for this option for our performance target. And this is the jurisdictional target, so once you combine all the, the data from all the different work sites, that's what the drive-alone rate would average out to be. So that leads us to what will the work site performance targets be? Currently, all the work sites in the city are working to complete a CTR commuter behavior survey. This is a survey that ideally all of the workers at each work site would complete, and that would give us information on how they are actually commuting to and from their work site. Once those surveys are complete, the city, we will use that data along with other work site characteristics, such as are, where are they located geographically in the city, are they near a transit line? Other things like that, do they have different shift changes such as manufacturing or hospital workers, things to that effect? And then with all of that data, we would determine a drive-alone performance target for each individual work site. Those individual work site performance targets will then feed into what are juris, will feed into the jurisdictional performance and whether or not Auburn is a jurisdiction will be meeting that sixty-seven percent jurisdictional performance target. The graphic below kind of shows how each of those feeds into the other two, being the full jurisdictional performance. I also mentioned that we did some engagement while drafting the CTR plan. For example, we did send out a short survey to businesses, whether they were CTR-affected or not, throughout the city, asking about what barriers for commuting their, they, or their employees, or even their customers face, and what would help businesses promote not driving alone. We didn't receive that many responses, but the responses we did receive showed that a lack of convenient transit routes was a top challenge. Some businesses also expressed a need for additional or easier-to-find information about non-drive-alone options. We also communicated with this CTR-affected businesses. Aside from just this particular engagement around the CTR plan, I am also frequently in contact with CTR-affected businesses about other aspects of the program. So throughout the year and as well as during the drafting of the plan, we've had discussions about what their challenges are with the commute. And then we also looked at feedback from the public that we gathered through other plans, drafting other plans, such as the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Our CTR, CTR plan must also consider and align with other jurisdictional and regional plans. So the plans that we reviewed to make sure that we were in alignment with included the Auburn Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan describes the land use. And so that really went into our CTR plan, which also talks about where the land use is in relation to CTR work sites, how that all works together. We also looked at some of the goals within the Comprehensive Plan and how our CTR plan aligns with those goals. We looked at the Auburn Comprehensive Transportation Plan. This is similar as how we reviewed the, the total Comprehensive Plan. And one of the things with the two thousand and twenty-four Comprehensive Transportation Plan is it, there are many goals and policies related to multimodal transportation. I know that was mentioned in some of the past presentations tonight. So that really aligns, CTR aligns very much with that in having that mode shift for people driving just by themselves to these other modes, whether it's carpooling, transit, walking, biking, et cetera. The image on the screen is a screenshot from one of our, the pedestrian facility level of, level of transportation service or traffic stress table from our Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We also looked at the various transit long-range plans. We have multiple transit agencies that serve Auburn, so we took a look at the King County Metro Long Range Plan, Metro Connects, Pierce Transit Long Range Plan Destination Two Thousand and Forty-five, and the Sound Transit Regional Transit Long Range Plan to ensure that information in those plans aligns with our, also our city goals and align with that. and align with that. And finally, the Puget Sound Regional Council, or PSRC, they have a long-range regional transportation plan. So we also reviewed that plan to ensure that everything was aligning. In addition to the state TDM Technical Board reviewing and approving our CTR plan, PSRC also has previously reviewed and approved this CTR plan as well. And in their review, they really looked to make sure everything was aligning regionally. So moving on from the CTR plan, we are also looking to update the city's CTR code, which is Auburn City Code 10.02. This was last updated in 2010. So the updates that we are including would make sure that the RCW numbers are updated sometime between 2010 and now. Some of the RCW numbers have changed. So I want to make sure that we accurately reference those. There's also been some updates to state CTR policies. They updated how, which teleworking employees would be CTR-affected. So we are including the updated language in our definitions for CTR-affected employees within our code. They als, also, WashDOT has also adjusted and updated their CTR survey response rate requirement. I mentioned all the work sites are currently undergoing, having their employees take their CTR survey, commute survey. WashDOT has some guidance on how many of the employees should respond to that to have that be good data. So like with a percentage of the response. So we've updated our code to reflect that update. And in the past, vehicle miles traveled was a performance metric, and that is no longer the case. It's now just the drive-alone rate. And so we have removed VMT as a performance metric from our code to reflect that state change in policy. We also have a little bit of modernization in our code. The previous code included some outdated communication methods, such as faxing, which is no longer really used. So we're just updating a little bit to reflect the times. We also have an update on the appeals process. So if an employer would like to appeal some of the requirements of the decisions. So for example, the city must approve, each employer has to have their own CTR program, which the city should approve. If any, any of those decisions, an employer would like to appeal that, we've adjusted the process so that now it'll go through the Public Works Director rather than going through the hearing examiner. And finally, the, the current code has a 12-month watch period. If an affected employer becomes no longer affected, say they used to have 150 employees that were affected, but they had to do some cuts, now they only have 75. We used to have, we currently have a 12-month watch period where they still have to keep up with all the CTR requirements for that full 12 months, and at which time we'll double-check that the numbers are still the same. We're now eliminating that. We don't want to have any hardship on businesses if they are undergoing that anyway. And what are our next steps? We'll be coming back on June 2nd with a resolution for the adoption of the CTR plan and an ordinance for the CTR code update. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions on the Commute Trip Production Plan? Councilmember Sturgis.
So is there a preferred method, whether it's public transportation or carpool, on trying to reduce their, their way of single use?
Yeah, that's a great question. In terms of the performance metrics, no. And it'll really, for each individual worksite, it'll really depend on where their workers are coming from, things like that. One of the things I do look at with their, their survey is we can tell where, like which zip code their employees are coming from. And you can see like, oh, are they coming from places with transit or not? And then kind of adjust their ways of encouraging employees to reduce their drive-alone rates based on that.
And thank you for your four years of service. So question is, so eight people responded to your survey. I'm assuming you sent out many more requests than that?
Yes.
Okay. So my concern is that we have a seven-person council here of people who care about the City of Auburn. We have 90,000-plus residents, people that care and also like to complain about things that are not perfect in Auburn, right? And so we had eight people respond. And so for you, in your role, you're coming to work every day for four years, caring, wanting to do a great job. And so how do you, I guess, what would advice would you give me as a new city council member? How do we get more people in the community caring to have a voice? Because we're all showing up wanting to help. You're showing up wanting to help. We had eight people respond to the survey. It's not, I don't think it's for, from a sense of they don't care. It's they're running their business, et cetera. But how do we get more input from the kind of silent majority so that they can help be a part of the solution instead of just complaining about the problem?
Right, that's a tough question. And I think it might be a little bit broader than the public engagement efforts, specifically with the CTR plan. I think part, honestly, I think part of the reason we had somewhat of a low response with that engagement effort of the general business community is the CTR, like, requirements don't necessarily directly affect everyone I was sending the survey out to. So like, it's probably not a high priority for them to respond. And that's why with this engagement effort, we also talk directly to the businesses that are actually affected by the CTR law, directly affected, and then also looking at public response from other plans. Because we did get more feedback with our transportation, Comprehensive Transportation Plan and other feedback efforts with other plans than with this. And so that is trying to, with this plan, I think this might be a little bit of a oddball out, a little bit on how much feedback we get back. But that is also a great question. And generally is how to get people to provide more feedback in general. And I'm not entirely sure of the answer to that.
I'm curious, just because the way that I look at it as a community member who owns a home here, who just cares about Auburn, is that I see, you know, the mayor and our city staff as the ones who come into work every day to try to make the city great. And then I see us as community members who live here, who either love it or we complain. And so how do we, as your city council, be better advocates? How can we help engage more folks to participate? Because you're, you're doing the right things to get feedback, but then people are choosing to not answer. And so how do you then put the right things in place when you're not getting the feedback you're asking for? So that's just kind of the why behind my question, but thank you very much.
Counsel, do we have more questions?
I have a couple.
Sure. With the Commute Trip Production Plan, one of the things that stood out to me is that the state code currently puts that in place for businesses that have more than 100 employees. If, are there other communities that change that threshold from a city standpoint or municipal standpoint?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then I'm also curious from the standpoint of, I have heard from community members who are interested in utilizing more transit, but they're low income and very much fixed income. And I know with King County Metro and some of the ORCA programs that if you're low income, you can get reduced rate ongoing ORCA passes. But that doesn't necessarily accommodate the working poor. How does the Commute Trip Production Program work with, like, the ORCA business passes?
So I do, I try to make that, the information about the ORCA business, passport or business choice programs available to the employers, the CTR-affected employers, so that they're aware of it. In terms of what they offer their employees, that's up to each business individually. So with part of, like, one of the reasons why we have them survey the employees is to understand how people are commuting and then also see if we can meet with those employers to see what they can, if they're not going towards their goal, like, what can, what changes can be made? And that may include things like providing transit passes to their employees, but that's an individual business choice that they'll have to make.
So question, are you?
Councilmember Sturgis.
Sorry. Sorry, and I'm used to corporate America where we just have open dialogue. So I'm learning the role of taking our turn, so I apologize. So is that to where we think that the working poor, there's a barrier to being able to get access to an ORCA card or to transportation?
So the reason I bring it up is because I have heard from different union groups that would be interested as a potential benefit, that they would like to be able to have ORCA Business Pass programs within their businesses. So as employees in organizations that are sub-100 employees, that hits in that spot where there are businesses in Auburn where there are employees who could be benefiting from having a, a business program. And when you think about what those costs have the potential to be, if you are a business buying that annual pass, and you can correct me if I'm off, but my understanding is the range for that annually is only about $180 to maybe $240 for the business to make the purchase. Now, when things are a benefit, that can also have tax benefits back to the business as well as opportunities to purchase with pre-tax dollars, which is then another benefit for the employee. For employees, if they're not operating through an ORCA Business Pass program and they're having to self-purchase their passes on a monthly basis, unless they fall into that category of being, you know, under 18, senior, or with the appropriate level of low-income thresholds, then they could be paying, you know, 100 bucks a month, which, you know, if that's your main transportation over the course of a year, that could be $1,200 for a household, which is a big difference from having an employer that would work with you to purchase it for 200, right? And so that's the reason I was curious from the CTR perspective if we're aware of other communities that have lowered that threshold to try and get more engagement from the businesses in offering those programs so their employees can opt into it.
So that.
The taxes. Tax benefits are there for both the employer and employee.
Right, and the, with CTR, if a business is CTR-affected, that means that they have these additional requirements that they must meet. But if a CTR is below that 100-employee threshold, they can still utilize the Business Passport or Business Choice programs. It's not limited to CTR-affected businesses. In terms, and so what the city is doing with, when we administer or implement the program is primarily, we're trying to ensure that the businesses that are affected, those larger ones, are meeting all of these requirements and then helping them figure out the ways to move towards their goals. And so the smaller employers, they still could participate in those ORCA programs, but they don't necessarily have to meet all of these additional requirements and have these goals that they're moving towards. So like, we could still have that information available for them to learn about and understand their different options. It's just we aren't, like, they don't have to have their employees do a survey. They don't have to have that goal that they're trying to strive for. So that sort of thing. So it's not, not, and I do think some other jurisdictions, particularly larger ones like Seattle, perhaps Bellevue or Redmond, do have some more outreach to businesses that are not affected. And that might be a little bit smaller. But most of the, to my knowledge, most of the other mid-sized or smaller jurisdictions are primarily focused on the CTR-affected businesses.
So just to clarify, the application process, oh, sorry.
Councilmember Sturgis.
I'm holding my.
Sorry. We're able to practice.
I will get better, I promise. It's my second study session. So the application process is pretty easy to go through for a business. I mean, it's not like it's going to take them hiring an attorney to be.
The application process.
For them to be able to be a part of this. If an employer or a company wants to be, wants to be able to offer this, they can contact the city. There's, you know, a way to walk through the process. It's fairly simple.
For the CTR, for CTR-affected businesses, it's supposed to be a self-reported thing. So there's businesses are supposed to let us know if they believe that they are affected by the CTRs, and they'll have to follow by those requirements. However, many businesses don't actually really know about the law. So also what we do is review business licenses to, and I will sometimes send out letters asking if, to fill out some additional information to see if they are affected. So it's not really an application process so much as an identification process. And then that's just to make sure that we are able to ensure that they are meeting the requirements that the state laws has laid out.
Okay.
As I know one of the company affected, they already have the program. They have the ORCA card they pay for, they have the van pool. And even if you be riding the van pool and you stay late, you're eligible to get taxis. So I know one of the company already have it for years, this program, available.
Yeah, many of, many of the CTR-affected businesses in Auburn have been affected for quite some time. You only have a handful of new, new ones. And so many of them do have already established commute programs, like you mentioned.
So in that space, with the CTR being, you know, state-mandated, self-reporting, 100-employee thresholds, I think with the gap being anything that is sub that, if there are businesses that were interested in pursuing the ORCA pass or ORCA Business Pass, rather, does your office provide any support there? Or would they need to just reach out directly to, I guess, King County Metro?
That's also a good question. If there is, if any of the other businesses any, have additional questions about those potential benefits, they can definitely reach out to us. And we would probably link them up to contact with King County Metro or perhaps Pierce Transit, depending on where they're located, to, because they would be the, those are the jurisdictions, the agencies that would actually be providing the ORCA Business Passport, things like that. But we can definitely help them understand what options are available and then get them the current contacts.
And then last question. In the attachment that you had, where you had the full document for the Commute Trip Production Plan, one of the things that I noticed in there is that for the 15 businesses, they're not even necessarily immediately adjacent to some of the direct transit routes that we have. Have we ever done anything a bit more proactive as far as, like, when the new eye line is coming in to expressly push communication out to the businesses that are going to be along those routes or changing routes to say, hey, you know, did you know you could be taking advantage of this for your, you know, employees and staff? So rather than pull where they're reaching out to us and we provide it, is there anything, as we're modifying our routes or setting up new routes? Because I think I saw in there that we are exploring some future routes with Metro Flex and into West Hill to Federal Way and Lakeland into Auburn. There could be some opportunities there.
I think that's a great idea. I have not yet done it.
And it's not to say that you have, it's just a question of have, have we done it? Have we considered?
To my knowledge, we have not done any proactive outreach to that extent, but I do think it's a great idea.
I think we might have GIS data that could tell us what.
Certainly, yeah.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Trump.
It's all great ideas. How are we telling our story? Where are we posting this so that people can go to our city webpage or the transportation webpage? I think we need to, you know, tell our story a lot better on issues like that.
Yeah, so we do have a, on the city website, there is a page that talks about transit and CTR is included in that. I do have it on my list to update. I was waiting for our plan and code update to be finalized to kind of start working on that, but that is on my mind.
I think that's everything. Thank you, Veronica. Appreciate your time. And back to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn the last two items over to Councilmember Trout Manuel, and the ordinance number 6979 and resolution number 5829.
You, you just do it.
Oh. Do you want to use point of order? It's just like, okay. So, oh, Paul, you're already there.
Yeah.
Nice to see you. Okay.
All righty, so as the agenda bill indicates there, we just simply found a gap where we had not created authority for our parking enforcement to enforce parking within the parking lots adjacent to city parks. within, um, the parking lots adjacent to city parks. It came to our attention because there were people parking across several stalls, and we were unable to give them legal authority to move. So they came to me and I threw that together.
Good job.
I just have a question. So are you talking every city park? And what do you mean adjacent to it? Does it have to be like connected to it?
Uh, so sometimes there are, so the, uh, code that we have right now talks about on-street parking. Uh, for off-street parking, it talks about specific municipal parking garages, but none of those are really captured. So if there is a, uh, park that has a parking lot that's next to it that is off of the street, it would, this new ordinance would apply to those as well. Currently, it's questionable as to whether or not we would have any authority to monitor parking in those areas. So it's anything that is next to, like, either as part of the park where it's obvious that it's part of the parking lot, or if there is a larger parking lot adjacent to a park, so.
Any questions, counsel?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I know. So next we have resolution 5829 with Director Chrome.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Claire Goodwin, the Skip Executive Manager, will be presenting tonight's, uh, 2026 Skip Work Plan presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Council President, members of the council, mayor. My name is Claire Goodwin. I am the Executive Manager for the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, or Skip for short. Um, and I will, uh, keep this as brief as possible. I've got about eight minutes of talking points. Um, but I'm excited to present to you the 2026 Skip, um, Work Plan and Budget. Um, this presentation is a formality and an annual process as is required by our inter-local agreement. Um, so thank you for having me here this evening. So for those of you that are, are new to our work, um, Skip is your sub-regional affordable housing consortium, formed in 2019 and made up of 11 South King County cities, um, your city included, plus King County. Skip's member jurisdictions are listed on this slide. And the city of Auburn also serves as Skip's administering agency. Uh, we are a unified, coordinated, and collaborative coalition funding the construction and preservation of affordable housing right here in South King County, in addition to supporting the sub-region's work and cross-jurisdictional collaboration towards addressing our shared affordable housing challenges. This is a meaningful opportunity to work together with neighboring cities to make an impact on the sub-region's affordable housing shortage. And to date, we have pulled over 14 and a half million dollars to house our low-income neighbors or rehabilitate deteriorating multifamily buildings. Our mission statement is listed on the slide. And the Skip inter-local agreement requires that the legislative bodies of the member jurisdictions that comprise Skip take action and adopt the Skip Executive Board-approved work plan and budget for the next year before it becomes effective. So the work plan and budget reflects the goals and priorities of the Skip Executive Board and incorporates the review and feedback of the Skip Staff Work Group. And the Skip Staff Work Group is made up of staff from each member jurisdiction that provides guidance to the Skip Executive Manager. So in January, a survey was administered to the Executive Board, and several drafts were developed and reviewed with the board and the staff work group. Um, and a final version was adopted by the Executive Board on May 16th, which is the version that you have in your agenda packet on page 191 of 196. So as you can see on our timeline, um, we are at the final stage of council adoption, um, and from, seeking this from 12, uh, member jurisdictions. So the four goals for the Skip Work Plan remain the same in 2026 as in 2025. Fund the expansion and preservation of affordable housing, develop policies to expand and preserve affordable housing, serve as an advocate for South King County, and manage operations and administration. And each goal in the work plan has corresponding actions that support the goal, and most goals, uh, are continuing the work from previous years. Each goal has corresponding indicators that will assist in measuring progress towards the goal, and those indicators are reported out in our annual report. Um, and the full, um, work plan with action items and indicators can find in your agenda packet. So the 2026 Skip operating budget totals $501,975. 64% of Skip's expenses go towards the salary and benefits of our two staff. Regarding revenues, Skip's operating budget is funded solely from Skip member contributions and are based on population tiers, which I'll briefly go over on the next slide. So no member jurisdiction is moving into a new population tier this, uh, year. And the Executive Board adopted a policy in July 2021 to increase member contributions by 15% each year through 2026 to work towards a balanced budget. Regarding expenses, salaries and benefits are proposed to increase by three-tenths of 1%, and this is to align with actual expenditures in this category. Interfund IT, which is the amount paid to you, a city of Auburn is our administering agency for IT services, is proposed to increase by 14%. Professional Services is proposed to increase by 46% or $26,000 due to an every-other-year data update to the Skip Affordable Housing Inventory Dashboard at $18,000 and anticipated higher rates for contracted services. Professional Services include advisory board compensation, contract attorney expenses, and that, uh, data update to the dashboard, including a few other items listed on your slide. So the proposal includes aligning budgeted categories with our administering agency. Um, and Skip continues to spend down the fund balance from previous year's cost savings to mitigate any additional increases to member contributions. And lastly, on the budget, the Executive Board is recommending the operating budget also include a portion of interest earned in 2024 primarily from Housing Capital Fund contributions towards an unrestricted fund balance in reserve. Interest earned in 2024 to be applied to the reserve in 2026 for the city of Auburn would be $26,486. For Skip to spend the interest earnings requires the approval of each Skip member with allocated earned interest based on their contributions. So with the adoption of the 2026 Skip operating budget, which incorporates a portion of the interest earnings into an unrestricted fund balance in reserve at the very bottom of the budget, the city council is providing authorization for Skip to use those funds for future budgeting purposes as recommended by the Skip Executive Board. These funds will assist in future years should there be an economic recession and members choose to pause an increase in dues or other unexpected expense arises. The remaining interest earnings will go towards the 2025 funding round of the Housing Capital Fund, and council will provide approval to use those funds during the annual concurrence process in early 2026. So this slide shows the Skip population tiers established in the ILA and the member contributions by year that incorporates a 15% increase each year. And the city's member contributions would be $52,295 for 2026. So this table shows the state's Office of Financial Management, or OFM, um, annual population data in 2021 through 2024 by each member jurisdiction. For the 2026 budget, the 2024 population data is used to establish which tier the city falls into. The 2025 population estimate is not published until June 30th, um, of this year. But as you can see, um, South King County is steadily growing, um, across most jurisdictions. So in conclusion, um, per our inter-local agreement requirements, um, I'm seeking your concurrence at a future meeting on the consent agenda to adopt the 2026 Skip Work Plan and Budget. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you very much. Counsel, we've come to the end of our agenda, so meeting adjourned.